Good morning, members, and to the viewing public and to the public here in the gallery and the lobby. The Chair will now call this third day, second regular session to order. Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please go to roll.
Representative Atta?
Present.
Representative Adon?
Here.
Representative Athel?
Present.
Senator Babalta?
Presente.
Representative Beneventi?
Gaget.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Present.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Present.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Gaget.
Representative Camacho Vicente?
Present.
Representative Castro?
Estegat.
Senator De Leon Garo?
Here.
Representative Flores Joseph? Representative Flores Marissa?
Present.
Senator Magovnia?
Gaget.
Representative Mengnonia?
Present.
Representative Omar?
Present.
Representative Probs?
Present.
Chairman Sablon?
Estegat.
Representative Villa Gomez?
Present.
Representative Yang Demai?
Yang Yiyit.
Representative Yumot? Representative Flores Joseph? Representative Yumot? Mister Chairman, we have nineteen members present and two members absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With nineteen members present, we duly establish a quorum. Please take note that Representative Ralph Yumot and Representative Joseph Flores is here by excuse. Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now in item B, reading an approval of the journal, and at this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Chairman Sablon. I now move to adopt SNOW journal twenty-three oh eight, second day, second regular session dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
There is a motion offered for the adoption of journal number twenty-three dash zero eight, and it has been seconded discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion adopted. Before we go to the next order of business, public comments, this time I recognize the floor leader for the motion to suspend pertinent rules.
Thank you, Chairman Sablon. I now offer a motion to suspend rules specifically to allow comments outside the topics of our order of business today as duly adopted in our agenda. And pursuant to rule two, section four D, this is not subject to the appeal of the delegation. So moved.
There is a motion to suspend pertinent rules, and it has been seconded discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion adopted. Moving along, we are now in public, item C, public comments, and at this time, the podium is open. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes for your public comments. Please proceed.
Good morning, honorable members. Chairman? Test, test. Mic check. Good morning, honorable members, Chairman, floor leader, vice chair, members of this honorable delegation. Thank you so much for allowing time and space for our community members to be heard. We are really grateful. Today is the International Day of Solidarity with Palestine, and so this morning, members of the community have organized and come together to voice their concerns and share time and space, and so we're really grateful for you allowing time for the community members to share some of their comments. Today, various members will share from the Marianas for Palestine collective statement in solidarity with Palestine, and this statement will be submitted for the record, and there are various CNMI organizations who have signed on to this statement, and so I'm really grateful for for your grace in allowing this time because international issues are definitely connected to the issues that we face locally, and so it is important as leaders in our community to be aware of local issues as well as global issues, and members of our community have gathered to help us raise awareness and help us learn and grow together, and so thank you, Mister Chairman, thank you, members, and I look forward to being here in support for any of you should you have any questions or would like to be connected to the network of people who are educated and aware of these international issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheila Babalta. The podium is still open. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to provide public comments. Thank you.
Good morning, honorable members. My name is Grace Choi, and I am a concerned community member. Even if we are geographically far from Palestine, I believe that we, as human beings, should all care and have a voice for Palestine. So I will be starting off the statement in solidarity with Palestine from the Marianas for Palestine Collective. "We, the undersigned community groups and organizations of the collective Marianas for Palestine, stand vehemently opposed to the ongoing genocide and forced displacement of Palestinian people and enduring apartheid and siege in occupied Palestine. Marianas for Palestine collectively mourns the thousands of lives violently massacred under the false claim of self-defense, most of them children. We stand with the many who are grieving and searching for loved ones." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. Podium is still open. Please proceed. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, honorable members. My name is Abdul Salam Castro Yunus, and I thank you for your time today from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of my father. The Marianas for Palestine Collective demands an immediate ceasefire in occupied Palestine, the immediate restoration of water, fuel, food, electricity, and internet connectivity to Gaza and other impacted areas of occupied Palestine, the end of military violence and oppression in the West Bank. We demand immediate aid for the thousands of injured and displaced Palestinians, the end to the armed supplies and funding to Israel, the end of apartheid and occupation by the settler colony state Israel. Marianas for Palestine further demands that all leaders from Guam and the Northern Marianas Islands join the international community in condemning the blatant violence and ethnic cleansing carried out upon Palestine by the settler colony Israel. Additionally, we demand that all government institutions and agencies respond and stop advancing Islamophobia, antisemitism, and racist violence being carried out within our communities. Marianas for Palestine refuses to ignore the increasing insecurity that results from increased militarization globally. The prevailing culture of killing and domination diverts the necessary funds and resources from critical community needs such as healthcare, housing, food, and education to fuel the military-industrial complex. This includes profit-making, political and cultural domination, and control of people and the planet without conscience at any cost."
Thank you, Mister Yunus. The podium is still open. Please proceed.
Good morning, Sabal Jair Buenos. My name is Saad Castro Yunus. I am the daughter of Abdul Alatif Yunus and Maria Paz Castro Yunus. I am here to make a statement in solidarity with Palestine. As colonized people of the Marianas, we recognize that the root cause of the war in Palestine is one of colonization, racism, and Zionist imperialism that demands power and control over vital natural resources and vulnerable human lives. Furthermore, we recognize the extractive and violent war industry also profits from occupying lands and oppressing native peoples in the Pacific. We know that the ongoing hyper militarization of the Marianas Islands has grown out of a similar history of land dispossession, power grabs, and denial of our sovereign indigenous rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yunus. The podium is still open for anyone here in the gallery that wishes to make comments. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, good morning, Chair, members of the SNOW. My name is Ray Munya, so I'll be wearing two hats in this public comment, so the first will be on my personal capacity. So I support the confirmation of the three members for the Saipan Higher Education Financial Assistance Program, Ms. Guadalupi Ingam, Ms. Kailani Demapon, and Mister Cal Hoffsneider. As mentioned in my previous statement with these members, I challenge them right now and moving forward by by helping our high school students here in the CNMI or here in Saipan make their first stop at NMC or at NM Tech, and also try and figure out this brain drain problem existing right now in the CNMI. Our graduates off island staying in the mainland, let's try and figure out a mechanism to bring them back. They have the knowledge, they have the credentials, the expertise, and let's bring them back home and make this place a better place. So I'm taking out my personal capacity hat and I'm wearing now my chairperson for the Civil Service Commission hat, and again, my name is Ray Munya. I am the chairperson of the Civil Service Commission. I appear before you today to urgently seek your support for a matter of utmost importance that directly affects the fair and just operation of our government, specifically our continual request for funding for an administrative hearing officer, miscellaneous communication number twenty-three dash seventy. The Commission is fully committed to addressing the twelve active cases currently under purview. Concurrently, we are actively addressing the deputy attorney general legal opinions regarding our authority to hear cases regardless of the presence of an administrative hearing officer. As we engage in the review and deliberation of these cases to determine the subsequent procedural steps, we cannot overstate the imperative for a qualified administrative hearing officer. Our regulatory framework, specifically subsection ten dash twenty point two dash one ten, within the personal service system rules and regs mandates the Commission to hold hearings and decide appeals. Notably, the Commission is authorized to enlist the services of qualified hearing officers when deemed essential, placing a particular emphasis on the term qualified. The significance of qualified cannot be overstated. Hiring a hearing officer with the necessary experience, training, and credentials to skillfully handle the complexities of the cases we have on file is the cornerstone of our funding appeal. Our steadfast dedication to providing our employees with due process highlights how crucial it is to appoint a qualified hearing officer in order to fulfill this commitment. Acknowledging our limitations, the Commission currently lacks the necessary training and experience to conduct the formal legal procedures and documentation requisite for an administrative hearing. Recognizing the urgency of securing the services of a qualified hearing officer, one can guarantee due process for employees and uphold the necessary standards in legal proceedings becomes paramount. In conclusion, we humbly, humbly implore your assistance in securing the funding required for this pivotal endeavor. Your support in the recruitment of a qualified administrative hearing officer is a direct contribution to upholding the principles of fairness, due process, and the best standards of legal procedures in our government. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, Mister Ray Munya. The podium is still open to anyone here in the gallery. Please proceed.
Howdy and good morning, members. My name is Carmen Cabra Pangilinen, and I'm currently the acting mayor of Saipan. On behalf of the mayor, Arby Camacho, I'm here to extend appreciation for the SNOW JGO Committee on the hearing of the three shefa nominees, Ms. Kailani Demapon, Mister Henry Kyle B. Hoffsneider, and Ms. Guadalupi Athel Ingam, and to humbly ask the entire SNOW body for your vote of confirmation on the three shefa nominees whom have been entrusted by the mayor for their administration of the shefa scholarship program.
Thank you, acting member, mayor, Carmen Pangilinen. The podium is still open. To anyone that wishes to make public comments, please proceed. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Howdy, Leser Maua. My name is Roberto Santos. I am speaking as a Tautautanu, an indigenous person of the Marianas, and as a member of the LGBTQ community of the Marianas, and I am using my time to continue our statement of solidarity with Palestine. Since the beginning of the conflict, twelve hundred troops have been deployed to the Middle East. This places a burden on our enlisted community members to fight on behalf of the United States in a conflict not of our own making. We refuse to engage in this conflict that further entrenches our dependency on militarization since few economic prospects outside the military are available in our islands. We also call on military members and veterans in our communities to stand with us and demand an end to genocide and apartheid. The state of Israel has consistently denied and subverted the security of Palestinian people through evictions and destruction of their homes, appropriation of their land, water supplies, and sources of livelihood, operation of checkpoints and surveillance to limit and control their movements, support for illegal Israeli settlements on Palestinian land, arbitrary use of detonation and incarceration, as well as collective punishment and dehumanization. For decades, decades, Israel has consistently violated international laws and committed war crimes with total impunity. On October fourteenth, the UN Special Rapporteur Francesca Albanese declared that in the name of self-defense, Israel is seeking to justify what would amount to ethnic cleansing. Any continued military operations by Israel have gone well beyond the limits of international law. In the April twenty twenty-two report of the United Nations High Commissioner for Human Rights, the High Commissioner for Human Rights states that Israel's settlements have significant adverse effects on the rights of Palestinians, including their rights to life and security of person, freedom of movement, privacy, family life, an adequate standard of living, work and education, and the exercise of their right to self-determination, and they threaten to fragment the continuity of the West Bank, and reiterated the illegality of Israeli settlements as confirmed by international bodies including the International Court of Justice, the UN General Assembly, the UN Security Council, and the UN Human Rights Council. Crucially, the High Commissioner for Human Rights called for the state of Israel to immediately and completely cease and reverse all settlement, development, and related activities in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem and in the occupied Syrian Golan in accordance with relevant United Nations resolutions, including Security Council Resolutions four ninety-seven from nineteen eighty-one and twenty-three thirty-four from twenty sixteen. Western governments are deeply complicit in these violations. Since twenty sixteen, the U.S. has committed thirty-eight billion dollars in military aid to Israel, including money for the Israeli air fleet and missile defense system. In a recent candid headline, Forbes declared, and these names are important to remember, Lockheed Martin and Northrop Grumman stocks notch best days in years amid Israel Hamas conflict. Money for war diverts critical funds away from urgent community needs, including health and education, not least of all, health and education. And this statement is endorsed by many movements in our community that represent all of us. Protehi Litekzan, Save Retidian from Guam, R Commonwealth Six Seven O, Inadaheni Linala, Kuttura and Somoru, Hita Litekzan, Pacifica Uprising, Independent Guam, Somnax Circles, For Micronesians, Bi-Micronesians, Pulan Collective, Filipinos for Guam, Adahi Imanautau Ta Mona, Maniaklun Marianas, Gumagela from Guam, Political Science Student Association of UOG, Protect Guam Water, Nihi Indigenous Media, Micronesia Climate Change Alliance, The Black Collective Guam, Ihagan from Malawan Guam, Deep Pacific Podcast, Deep Pacific Collective of Pacific Peoples, Guam Pride, Pride Marianas, Well Read, and Imam Khalid Khan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Santos. The podium is still open for any member of the public here in the gallery that wishes to make comments. There happens to be no further comments. At this time, the Chair will move forward in our order of business, and we are now in item D. There happens to be none on item D, introduction of local bills. None on item E, introduction of local resolutions. We go down to item F, messages from the governor, Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have one governor's communication number twenty-three twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on messages from the governor. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on item G, messages from the mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands, Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have two mayor's communication numbers, twenty-three eleven and twenty-three twelve.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on messages from the mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, there happens to be none on item H, reports and communications from heads of department agencies. We move further down on item I, House Communications, Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have one House Communication number twenty-three forty-six.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on House Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving down to item J, Senate Communications, Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have one Senate Communication number twenty-three thirteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Senate Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, there happens to be none on item K, delegation matters. We move down to item L, miscellaneous communications, Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have three miscellaneous communications, number twenty-three seventy to twenty-three seventy-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on miscellaneous communications. Recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Chairman Sablon. In harmony with the public comments provided by the Civil Service Commission Chair, Mister Munya, I agree with him, and I think this body has an obligation to help government agencies when they can to appropriate sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars for the hiring of an administrative officer, as there are serious pending cases before the Commission at this time. But I also further their request to seek a share from the Tinian and Rhoda delegations. Civil Service Commission does not only serve the island of Saipan, they also serve classified employees in the municipalities, and I encourage the Civil Service to seek funding from those respective legislative bodies as well. Thank you, Mister Chairman Ayew.
Thank you, floor leader. Any further discussion on miscellaneous communications? Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on item M, reports of standing committees, and at this time, I recognize the floor leader for the proper motion.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I now offer a motion to adopt SNOW Committee Report number twenty-three oh seven, dated eleven twenty-one twenty-three, from the Standing Committee on Judiciary and Government Operations, reporting on the reappointment of Kailani Marie B. Demapon to serve as a member of the Board of Saipan Higher Education Financial Assistance or SHEFA. So moved.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader for the adoption of the Standing Committee Report twenty-three dash zero seven for the confirmation of Ms. Kailani Marie B. Demapon, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion.
Ready.
Ready? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please go to roll.
Representative Atta?
Yes.
Representative Adon?
Yes.
Representative Athel?
Yes.
Senator Babalta?
Ungan.
Representative Beneventi?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Vicente?
Yes.
Representative Castro?
Ungan.
Senator De Leon Garo?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marissa?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Representative Mengnonia?
Yes.
Representative Omar?
Ungan.
Representative Probs?
Yes.
Representative Villa Gomez?
Awer.
Representative Yang Demai?
Awer.
Chairman Sablon?
Ungan.
Mister Chairman, we have nineteen members voted yes, two members absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With nineteen members present voting in the affirmative, the motion to confirm Ms. Kailani Marie B. Demapon to serve as a member of the SHEFA board hereby is adopted. Congratulations, Ms. Demapon. Recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I now offer a motion to adopt SNOW Committee Report number twenty-three oh eight, dated November twenty-one twenty-three on the Standing Committee on Judiciary and Government Operations, reporting on the reappointment of Henry Kyle B. Hoffsneider to serve as a member of the Board of the Saipan Higher Education Financial Assistance or SHEFA. So moved.
Thank you, members. There is a motion offered by our floor leader, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please go to roll.
Representative Atta?
Yes.
Representative Adon?
Yes.
Representative Athel?
Yes.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Representative Beneventi?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Vicente?
Yes.
Representative Castro?
Ungan.
Senator De Leon Garo?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marissa?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Representative Mengnonia?
Yes.
Representative Omar?
Ungan.
Representative Probs? Representative Villa Gomez?
Ungan.
Representative Yang Demai?
Awer.
Chairman Sablon?
Ungan.
Mister Chairman, nineteen, all nineteen members voted yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all nineteen members present voting in the affirmative, the motion to confirm Henry Kyle B. Hofschneider to serve as a member of the Board of SHEFA is hereby adopted. Congratulations, Mister Hofschneider. Moving along, on our last, on reports and standing committees, I recognize the floor leader.
Mrs. Smoss, Chairman Sablon. Now, I now offer a motion to adopt Snout Committee Report Number twenty-three oh nine dated November twenty-one twenty-three from the Committee on Judiciary and Government Operations, reporting on the appointment of Ms. Guadalupe A. Ingam to serve as a member of the Board of Saipan Higher Education Financial Assistance or SHEFA. So moved.
There is a motion offered by a floor leader, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Representative Atta?
Yes.
Representative Adan?
Yes.
Representative Atta?
Present.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Representative Beneventi?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Vicente?
Yes.
Representative Castro?
Ungan.
Senator De Leon Guerrero?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marisa?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Representative Manglonya?
Yes.
Representative Omar?
Ungan.
Representative Probs?
Yes.
Representative Villa Gomez?
Yes.
Representative Yangtemai?
Ungan.
Chairman Sablon?
Ungan.
Mister Chairman, all nineteen members present voted yes.
Can we confirm the votes, Madam Clerk? I believe one member voted present.
Representative Atta?
Present.
Mister Chairman, eighteen members voted yes, and one member voted present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With eighteen members voting in the affirmative and one member voting present, the motion to confirm Ms. Guadalupe Atta Ingam to serve as a member of the Board of SHEFA is hereby adopted by the delegation. Congratulations. Thank you, members. That took care of item A, reports of standing committees. We move down to, there happens to be none on item N, reports on special and conference committee, none on item O, unfinished business, none on item P, resolution calendar. We have none on item Q, bill calendar. We now move down to item R, miscellaneous business. Are there any miscellaneous business? Recognize Representative TJ Manglonya.
Thank you, Chairman Sablon. And I guess I'd be remiss if I don't take this opportunity to thank, you know, everybody that was here earlier today in support of Palestine. I I'm not an expert on this issue, nor do I try my best to stay neutral on most issues to see both sides. But if there's one thing that I can see is that we cannot ignore the fact that this is not affecting our people here. We do have a crowd that came up here to voice their concern and to show their passion for what they believe in, and I truly respect that and admire that. That's what we should do as citizens and residents is stand up for the rights and the morals that we believe in. And again, I'm not an expert on the subject, and I don't I don't know who's right or wrong, but I can sympathize with the loss of children. If anyone can, I can. And we know what's right and wrong. And in any circumstance, in any case, the loss of innocent life, the loss of children is not right. I feel that firmly in my heart. And if there's anything that I do support, it is a ceasefire. It is ending war. We need to stop division among not just our community, but in the world. We're all one race. We're all a human race. And regardless of who's right or wrong, we all have our opinions. We all have our beliefs and what we're passionate about, but it shouldn't result in the killing of innocent lives. And I'm not too sure where the rest of my colleagues stand or anyone else stands, but I personally support the ceasefire. And I support the ending of unjust killings, especially for the killings of innocent children. So I thank you. I thank you and thank everybody that came up here to voice their opinion, to voice their concerns, and to bring this to light. Because, just because we're out here in the middle of the Pacific Ocean doesn't mean that these things in the world don't affect us, that they don't strike a chord in our hearts, because they do. And again, I'm not an expert. I've tried to take some time to do some research and even talk to, you know, some of the people that were out there to understand their stance, and I still don't have a clear understanding of who's right or wrong, but it doesn't matter. I just know that the killing, killing is wrong. And I do support our military, I do support, you know, the people that lay their lives out and their life to support our freedom, but that should be the absolute last resort is war. Thank you, Mister Chairman, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Representative TJ Manglonya. Any further miscellaneous? Under miscellaneous business, recognize Representative Marissa Flores.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we all can agree that the loss of life is painful, and it's it's heartbreaking. I can't echo enough Manglonya's sentiment. And there's members of our community who have lost life there from my conversations with those increasing awareness of the ceasefire and what's happening in the Middle East, and I can absolutely feel that heartache. To be all the way from there and move here, raise your children here, and to lose family members in a war, that's unnecessary. We have an obligation as people to support humanity. And I think that through that conversation, I have, I would like to ask our speaker and our Senate President to join the rest of us and the rest of them in our community and draft a letter to convey our message to the world from the Marianas that we support a ceasefire, we support children, we support life, we support love, we support peace. So with that, that is my ask, and I ask this for all those members in the community that have stood, exercised their right to assemble, spread awareness, increase peace, and stop war. I can support that, and I hope that my colleagues will join me in this endeavor, and I hope that our two officers could also support me on the request. We are one people, we are one community, and there are members in our community that have been affected personally by this. And as a people, we stand to support each other, but we also stand to heal the world one life at a time. And as Tramora people and Rafa'awash, the biggest message we can send is we support love, we support peace. That's how we raise our kids. So with that, Mister Chair, Ayew.
Thank you, Representative Marissa Flores. Further discussion, let me recognize the vice speaker, Representative Joel Camacho.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Just like to take this opportunity to congratulate the three SHEFA nominees. I look forward to your tenure in your positions, and should you need any assistance or help, our offices are always open. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Joel Camacho. Any further discussion on miscellaneous business? Ready? I recognize Representative Castro.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. First of all, I would also like to congratulate the new SHEFA board members. And I'd also like to thank the members of the community that came up to voice their their concerns regarding what's happening in the in Israel and Palestinian area. In college, I was able to study the issue in one of my political science classes, and it, you know, the issue dates back many years. But the fact that two of my cousins were able to give testimony about the concerns, imagine a situation where let's say in Finacesu where you have a family compound, and someone comes in and bulldozers all the mango trees and tells you to get out of your your homeland. So I know this issue is a very sensitive issue, but I encourage members to really look into the history of the situation and so that way we can, we can really see how it how it affects everyone. There's a lot of similarities and a lot of things that despite the distance, I'm sure that as indigenous people, it can also hit home. Thank you. Ayew, my time.
Thank you, Representative Castro. Further discussion on miscellaneous business, let me recognize Representative Edwin Quaps.
Thank you, Chairman and colleagues, and congratulations to our new SHEFA members and our returning SHEFA members. Thank you for your service. And as was mentioned by the vice speaker, we are here to help you. If you need anything, please, please don't hesitate to call on us. I also want to chime in and thank those who spoke today. It's very emotional, no doubt. Of course, the ties and the roots, you know, of the Yunis family and others is is there, and although this this war that is going on is so far away, we can't help but feel it here on our own islands. One of the greatest things about living here in the Commonwealth is how accepting and loving in general our community is. We accept everyone from everywhere. And you see that in our public schools, in our private schools, and other places, how how loving and peaceful we are as a people. This is a brutal war, and there are atrocities on all sides that have happened, and it is it is nice to hear those that are speaking out against it. When you think of twelve thousand people being killed, and two-thirds of them are women and children, is that collateral damage? No, it's killing, it's murder, it's mayhem. And I want you to think of that that number. If something were to happen here on our islands, how much we would be affected by that. But just want to say that we, as a people, should be able to speak out on things like this without having to worry about repercussions from anything. Doesn't mean that you're anti-Israel or anti-Palestine when you call for peace and call for ceasefire and call for a better way to come together on something so sad. This is a very long topic that, of course, is very complex, but you cannot discount the fact that there is tremendous suffering right now in Palestine and in what the people are going through. So I I just want to thank those who came today to testify and know that there are many of us members here who are also praying and calling for a ceasefire and an end to the senseless violence that is ongoing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Representative Probs. Further discussion, I recognize Senate President, Senator Edith de Longuero.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. With absolute respect for the members coming up to express their sentiment with what's happening in the world. Ourselves here in the Marianas, we recently unveiled the monument down at the American Memorial Park for the loss of family members during World War II. I myself, I never realized that, I never knew actually, until I read the program, that my grandmother's brother was also innocently killed during the war, and his name was listed. If it's anything that we could walk away with as human beings, and I don't think I'm wrong for the entire world, that everybody's asking from our man up above or God. And in the song, if I'm not mistaken, it was sang by Michael Jackson, heal the world, make it a better place for you and for me and the entire human race. It's the most that we could ask from everybody in the entire world, so that we may have peace. And also in our region, we're facing it, a regional military buildup because of all the different forms of government. It's all about power. It's all about greed. It's all about money. God forbid that we witness World War III. God forbid. The best we could ask is for world peace, and for our children too, will not have to see what our grandparents saw during World War II. We have peace in this world. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Edith de Longuero. Any further discussion under miscellaneous business? Ready? Thank you, members. We move now to item S, announcements. Any announcements? None? Before I recognize the floor leader for the motion to adjournment, if I may ask the members to just stay back and just have a quick follow with the newly confirmed SHEFA board members. Thank you, members, and at this time I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Chairman Sablon. It is now ten forty-seven a.m., and I offer a motion to adjourn today's session, subject to the call of the chair.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader for the adjournment of this session, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. All those, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. We are now adjourned. Thank you, members.